We're gonna go ahead and start. We would like to call to order the special meeting, introduce Camille Tharp with GSG. She's gonna give an update and reports on tax increment financing projects.
Okay. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name's Camille Tharp. I'm with Government Services Group. And I'm gonna go through this presentation. Please stop me if you have any questions. Let me get myself rearranged so I don't drop stuff here. Okay. I'm gonna talk about the projects that we're going to look at funding, how you calculate a tax increment, our analysis of the two project areas, and conclusions. We have two projects we looked at. One is the, what I call, the County Road 38 project. And that project includes properties south of the bay and south Walton. The project, actual capital projects that we would look at funding are things such as drainage, roadways, crosswalks, and bridge improvements along County Road 38. This area is comprised of approximately forty thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight properties of, and the project costs for the improvements you're being asked to look at are about eleven point three million dollars. And in fact, since the last time I talked to you all, one of the bridges has gotten funding, so one of the bridges has been removed from the cost. And so you see, there's actually been a decrease in the cost there. The other project we looked at is the US 331 project. That extends from Dufuniac Springs down to Freeport. It's the unincorporated area only, although we can look at the incorporated area. It is water and wastewater infrastructure along the 331 corridor. This area is comprised of only one thousand two hundred twenty-seven properties, and those project costs are about twenty-nine million dollars. Just for reference, to calculate a tax increment, you've established the tax increment area. You determine the aggregate taxable value for that area for a base year, whether it's 2013 or 2014. In our analysis, we use 2013, because at the time we started this, we only had the millage rate from the 2013 tax year. You then calculate the total edulorma tax imposed by the county based on the county's millage rate for the base year, multiplied by the aggregate taxable value, and that's your base year tax revenue. And then the increment for each year is calculated by deducting the base year tax revenue from the amount computed by multiplying that same millage rate by the aggregate taxable value for each year. This is the County Road 38 proposed tax increment area, and it's comprised of those properties directly abutting County Road 38, the properties that are south of Highway 98 in blue, and then the properties that are north of Highway 98 that are in green. And of all the properties in this area, out of the forty thousand seven hundred and eight parcels, still ten thousand four hundred and seventy-six of them are vacant, unimproved properties. We have about fourteen thousand residential parcels in this area, and almost ten thousand condos in this area. We did an analysis on the County Road 38 project area by looking at the historical taxable values. We looked at the annual changes in taxable value, the average change, the annual average change, and did an autoregressive modeling. This chart shows you the historical annual changes. And what this does is, it shows you that in County Road 38, the parcels directly abutting County Road 38, that the historical annual changes, the total change over a ten-year period from 2005 to 2014 is sixty-seven percent. And you can see every year, there's been increases up or down depending on what was happening at the time. County Road 98 South, which is those properties south of County Road 98, their average, their historical annual change is seventy point sixty-six percent. And then the Highway 98 North change is sixty-two point eighty-seven percent. I don't have a chart of it, but in your reports that I gave you, Table Four from the report, when we combine all three of these areas, the historical annual change for the combined areas is sixty-eight point thirty-three percent. And the taxable value in the combined areas was a high of fifteen point four billion dollars of taxable value in 2007, and last year in 2014, it was ten point seven billion dollars. This is a table that shows you the average change and the annual average change. The average change is what we did is, we took all the information in the previous chart, and we divided it by nine years, so that we got an average change over all those years. And you can say that, see that it's pretty consistent among all the three areas, and for the combined areas, the average change is seven point five nine percent. So that's the average change in taxable value over this ten-year period. The other column in this is the annual average change, which is a little bit different than just the average change, in that we're doing a little bit of a different calculation. And again, the three areas are looking consistently the same amongst them, and the annual average change is five point forty-eight percent. What we also looked at was the pre-recession and post-recession changes, because we know that, you know, before this time, if we would've looked at the values, they would've probably just kept increasing and increasing and increasing. But as you look at that chart on the slide on page seven, you saw there were periods of years where we actually saw a decrease in taxable value. So we analyzed what was happening pre-recession and post-recession on the taxable values. And what we found was that the changes, the sum of the changes in the years 2005, 2006, no, 2005, six, and, no, 2006, seven, and eight, was a positive of an over thirty percent change. And for the combined areas was thirty-one point eighty-two percent. But when you look at the post-recession era, which is 2009 through 2014, we saw that was a negative change, and for the combined areas was a four point five two negative change. Next thing we did was a regression analysis. And this was basically plotting all the information that we had in all those tables, and then making predictions about how things would go in the future, so that you would have an idea of whether or not this was a tool you could use to fund your projects. And of course, because of the issues with the pre-recession, post-recession taxable value changes, and the fact that we went from very high positives to negatives, it's not, it's not as stout of an analysis as you would have if you would've had twenty years of just ever increasing values or ever decreasing values. But what the regression analysis does tell you is that if we keep going the way we've been going, under this autoregression analysis, that you will see almost twelve billion dollars in value by the year 2024. And we're very comfortable with recommending that you can, we're predicting that you can at least stay within a two percent inflation change in value every year. So next, what we did was, we said, okay, we think that on the 38 project, based on what we've seen in the past, even in spite of the fact that we had a dip for a few years, that it's starting now to recover, and we're starting to see the increase in taxable value starting to happen in the 38 area, and that we're comfortable with at least recommending that you're gonna have a two percent increase every year. What we did is, we then said, if you were going to go ahead and try to bond, go out and try to build these projects, this eleven point three million dollars worth of projects, and you were gonna use the tax increment dollars to refund the money that you were going to borrow, could you do it? And so we made some assumptions about the fact that you'd be borrowing eleven point three million dollars over thirty years with a five percent interest rate, and determined that, in order to pay back the debt service on those assumptions, you'd have to have a percent change in taxable value of about three percent. We're recommending two percent as a safe number, however, three percent, you know, is within reason. When we looked at what two percent each year generates, based on the 2014 taxable value, you're generating about seven hundred thousand dollars a year. Now that's gonna start adding up as the years go along. So it seemed reasonable that you would be able to go ahead and count on this increment money to pay back the debt. In the report, and not part of this presentation, we also looked at a pay-as-you-go option. And what we said was, you know, with the kind of taxable value changes you saw historically, and what you're going to start seeing, we're comfortable that you could start maybe some of these projects on a pay-as-you-go basis. The first part of this, from the engineers, was that there'd be certain things you'd do at certain times. Of course, the first thing would be the engineering and the design. And the engineering and the design, excuse me for a second, I'm gonna get my report. And this is on page nineteen of a report that I prepared for you all. No, page, no, page thirteen, sorry. Page thirteen of the report. These costs are coming from your county engineers and public works. What they said is that if they were going to do this on a pay-as-you-go funding option, there would be a certain prioritization of the project construction. They'd first do engineering and design work, which is about one point three million dollars, and then you'd be doing the bridge construction, then the roadway and drainage improvements. And Table Eleven of your report shows you that even at a two percent increase in taxable value, it is doable to start getting this work done in a period of years. Again, I think two percent's very conservative. I think you're never gonna go back to the thirty, thirty-one percent, but I think that you're going to have an ability to see some increases in value there that are gonna be able to support the pay-as-you-go option. And I think especially in your first year, since your first year costs are, the engineering and design, at about one point four million dollars, I think that, you know, it would be reasonable to go ahead and start earmarking that money for that engineering design first, and see where you are in a year. And then you'll start, you know, you can redo this trend analysis and see where you are, and, you know, if we start seeing huge spikes going up, then, you know, you could have a thirty percent increase in one year and knock out all these projects. I mean, so, pay-as-you-go really is a safer way to go, because then you only got the money, you've got the money and you spend it as you've got it. The going out and getting bonds is, you've got some added costs. It is doable, a lot of people do do it, but it does have a little bit more risk.
Camille, are you recommending then that the entire amount of the increase be applied to it, or is this a portion of the increase?
Um, when you set this up, you can do whatever you want. You can do a percent of the increase, you can do a just set amount. Say you say, every year, we're going to dedicate one and a half million dollars, or whatever the increment is, towards our project. Then you'll know every year exactly what pot you've got. Or you can do some percentage of it, you can do fifty percent. I mean, it's your policy decision. What I'm saying is, if you would need to dedicate a hundred percent of it at first, if you're gonna do pay-as-you-go. You know, a hundred percent of the increment, but you have other expenses, you have other things, you know.
If you do a financing, because it's going to involve edulorm taxes, you're gonna have to have a referendum, aren't you?
No, because this isn't, it's, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not, you don't need a referendum to impose, to pay for a bond that's backed by TIF. Now, a bond backed by TIF is not as attractive to the bondholders because of the reliability of the TIF, and the fact that you could have a couple good years and then a bad year. So you would probably have to have a secondary pledge, on the TIF pledge, in order to have money in case your TIF didn't go the way you planned.
And what are you recommending for that secondary pledge?
You could use assessments, which, you know, you could do a special assessment in this area for a portion of the cost related to the drainage, and that could be your secondary pledge.
Gas tax.
Gas tax, yes. Sales tax, yes.
Gas tax, sales tax, what else?
Not edulorm taxes, because of the referendum requirement. And even an MSTU wouldn't help you there, because that would also require a referendum.
Right.
But certainly any of those sources, and again, those are, even out of your gas tax and your sales tax, they don't have the same kind of attractiveness, because again, they could go up and down with the economy. The assessments are something right or wrong. They kind of, they can stay steady throughout the economic upturns and downturns, and the bond market is very favorable towards special assessments. And special assessments, if you went out to borrow the money, you'd probably get better interest rates, better financing deal, if you pledged the special assessments. A lot of places use both. They use one or the other, and I've told you individually when I met with you, that I've worked on projects where they actually pledged the special assessments as the primary pledge, they used the TIF as the secondary pledge, and as the TIF increased in value each year, eventually the special assessments went away. So that has happened.
Yeah, and I think one of the beauties of the TIF is that it's tax money that's collected in a certain district, which goes back into that district. I'm totally against special assessments, because I think that our people pay enough taxes and enough taxes on everything, so to me, special assessments should be off the table. But I do know that we need about four, two or three million dollars to overlay County Road 38. If we don't do it this year or next, it's going south, and it's gonna be about twice that much. So, you know, we're looking for sources of revenue that could do things like that, that we're not gonna have the money out of the general budget, I don't think, to do. So that's, that was one of the reasons why I thought it was, might be an interesting proposition.
Definitely, it was a surprise to me that it was so doable, especially when you contrast it to the 331. And I'm not gonna go through all the steps with that again, because honestly, when you look at the 331 project, and the costs, and the values that are in there, it, to me, you might wanna do a tax increment base year, just because you might generate some revenue at some point in time. But I've even talked to a few economists who've said, you know, we're not, even with huge redevelopment there that we all expect to happen, you're probably not gonna see just a huge shift in that taxable value for quite a few years, after the 331 project is complete. So again, this is that 331 tax increment area, and we had three tiers based on some analysis that the county had already done, did the same analysis, same historical changes in value. However, I do wanna point out, this is the unincorporated area only, and whereas we are talking about billions of dollars in the 38 area, on the 331 project area, we're talking taxable value in the millions, sixty million dollars. So it's just way different kind of composition of property. It's vacant land, it's agricultural property, you have a lot of federal property, military property, and so the group of properties that are there, which is, there's only, you know, twelve hundred of them, they just don't have the taxable value that you see on County Road 38. Again, went through the same changes, same positive changes on average, same pre-recession, post-recession kinds of changes that we saw on 38. Did the same kind of regression analysis, only when we did this regression analysis, we came to the conclusion that even with a two percent inflationary increase, you know, you're only generating less than ten thousand dollars a year based on the taxable value that you have in the area. So you'd have to have a major shift in redevelopment to see that being, supporting any kind of major project construction costs. And so with that...
So when you say 38, you're referring to everything south of the Chautauq?
Yes, yes.
South of the bay, okay.
And again, on the 331 project, it was about twenty-eight million dollars, and doing a bond repayment at the same kind, with the same kind of assumptions, you'd need almost two and a half million dollars of debt service every year, and that would take about a, over a thousand percent increase in taxable value to generate that kind of money. So I'm here to ask, to answer any questions. We do have two reports that I know you, I hope you all got, and if you have individual, if you have questions after this, I can come and meet with you individually.
Yeah, I think, I think I would like that as well.
I would as well, yeah.
Okay.
Do we want, do we need any further direction on that? We wanna meet with staff, and then maybe bring it back up in another meeting?
Yeah, we will need to, and I think that with Camille to come around, because with the original report we have, there's been some modifications to that.
Yes, there has.
I think it'd be good to sit and talk with you in detail
Yes.
About the ramifications of those changes.
Correct. I can do that. And the only other thing I would recommend on the 331, and even on the 38, is something I told you, I talked to some economists, I talked to Hank Fishkin, we all know who he is. I do think at some point in time, we've just done the numbers, and this is just strict statistics. I think you might at some point in time wanna have an economist come in here and do some sort of modeling that they do, that might give you a better feel for how real these numbers are going to be, and they might even have better news for you on 331.
Well, and one thing too, I was wondering, is, you know, like you said, there's statistics, and there are timelines. Like, for instance, in a certain year, the bridge will be done.
Right.
In a certain year, it'll be four lane, and in a certain year, St. Joe's project will be undergoing. So if you take all that into account, I think it could change the numbers as well.
Right.
Just for FYI, commissioners, I spoke to the Hoss Center and the folks there about doing a similar type study, and it's a, could be a twenty-five to fifty thousand dollar endeavor. So, I mean, it's not
Cheap.
A million dollar deal.
Yeah.
Right, but it's
But it does give you different information.
Yes.
Again, this is statistics, and they have all that model, and they can really tell you what they think is going to happen there, and it could surprise us all.
Just from a legal standpoint, it's a straight ordinance that
Correct.
Can be repealed or added to.
Correct. Yeah. Well, you do set your base year, and then, and then, you know, you are, because what you set aside then as your base year, and then what you're going to set either as your percentage or your value, does affect your millage, your rollback rate. Because I wanted to make sure that this didn't hurt you when you're doing your rollback rate. As a matter of fact, there's actually a calculation that you'll do then, is you'll take the value out from the increment, and you'll get back to a number that's less that increment to compare back to your rollback rate. So it's not gonna hurt you for the rest of the county on your rollback rate.
And when you set a base year, can you go back?
I don't think you can go back. So I think you're gonna, you know, I think you're gonna, if you're gonna wanna do this, you're gonna wanna do it before you start seeing the uptick, go much more.
So could you, could you do it for 2014?
I think so.
I think, yeah, if you pass the ordinance this year, we can use a car.
So if you did, okay.
And it's just, like you said, you've got an ordinance already drafted, and it basically just lays out the fact that you have the authority, and then you're doing the rest of it.
Right. Would there be any negatives to establishing the ordinance, establishing the TIF, and then, I mean, is there any, and then see how much money you accumulate, is there any negatives to that, or is it?
You know, I think legally, you could pass the ordinance, and if it turns out that next year's tax base doesn't go up as much as you thought or projected, you could always just simply repeal the ordinance, and I'm saying this a little bit off the top of net, and I believe it, repeal the ordinance and then put the money back in the general office.
Yeah, yeah. I think so too. And again, I just, I know you're gonna have other costs in the county, because as the economy turns around, you're
Right.
So we, you'd wanna make sure that you set that base year, and then set what you're gonna set aside as something that you can live with for everything else you need to do.
And I understand other counties have done two ordinances, one saying if it reaches this amount, it will continue, and then another one automatically repealing if it doesn't, is that true?
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, then I'll just come back, I'll get with staff and get some times to meet with y'all, and go, I know Commissioner Enfield, you've got lots of questions on the 331 costs. At some point in time, we might wanna have the engineers come in and talk to us about that, 'cause I think if we're gonna do 331, we'd wanna look at those costs a little bit more closely. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. We'll, we'll take a break until four o'clock, when we will start the regular meeting. Get your attention, Juan. Okay, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna get started here. I'd like to welcome y'all to the October 28 BCC meeting. I'd like to advise y'all, if you would, to please turn off your cell phones. And at this time, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Commander's gonna lead us in an invocation.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the light that you provide for our journey every day. As we meet to conduct the business of the citizens of Walton County, please give us the power, and the courage, and the wisdom to follow your guidance. In all these things, we ask, we thank you for your blessings today and every day, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also too, I'd like to announce that Commissioner Chapman is at the canvassing board, counting, what, absentee and absentee votes, and supposedly there's thousands of those, so he won't be with us tonight. So as vice chair, I'm taking over as chairperson for this particular meeting. I would like to, at this time, recognize some guests that we have in the audience. Senator Don Gates, I believe, is here. And Senator Gates, would you like to say a couple words? And while you come up there, we would like to sincerely thank you for the Mossy Head Industrial Park project infrastructure funding, and for the four-laning of 331 and the bridge funding.
Thank you, ma'am. May I hand these out?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and commissioners. I appreciate the chance to appear briefly before you. What I'm handing out right now is simply a list of legislative appropriations that affect Walton County broadly speaking. Obviously, there's a reference there to educational appropriations, as well as appropriations that that, other appropriations that fall outside your direct purview, but issues in which I know you have a great interest. And, and I appreciate as well, Madam Chair, your, your comment about the Mossy Head Industrial Park, the wastewater treatment facility, and, and the other issues that you were kind enough to bring to my attention. By my reckoning, this year, the legislature appropriated $89 million for Walton County projects. I think that's a new record. And that includes some $57 million in DOT projects that are front-loaded for next year, that are projects I know have been on the commission's mind and that you have, that you've put in high priority. My second purpose in coming forward today, Madam Chair, was simply to thank the commission for the clarity with which you have made your, your needs known to me and other members of the legislative delegation, and to ask that we engage in the same kind of helpful conversation this year, so that as we approach the legislative session, that we'll know precisely what is the most important to Walton County, so that all the members of the delegation, including me, will have a chance to, to try to do for you those things that, that matter most, both in terms of appropriations that can be helpful, legislation that can be productive, and also avoiding legislation that could be harmful or problematic to you. So, mostly, I wanted to thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission, for our good working relationship, which I think has produced a record amount of support by the legislature for projects and causes that are important to Walton County. And I'd be happy, Madam Chair, to take any questions or comments you might wish to
Does anyone have any comments or questions? Just a big thank you for all you do. Yes, and I think we have a special presentation for you that we would like to, if all the commissioners would come down, we would like to present you with
Oh, my goodness.
A small token of our appreciation. Larry, you need to down here?
No, you're okay.
Oh, well, thank you, my goodness.
This is to recognize in one small way the, the very many efforts that you made with the Senate, with the House, and with the governor in particular, to help us get the necessary funding and the jobs that are coming out of this. So, we are
Thank you.
We're sincere in the economic development, we're sincere in the jobs that you provided to Walton County and neighboring areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. This is the first time I've gotten a toy like this in about, in about 60 years.
Well, we invite you out to love, to enjoy McDonald's.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Oh, well, thank you, gosh, this is great.
Thank you so much again.
Of course.
We look forward to working with you in the next
Like it says, driving jobs, and that's what
Well, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you all.
And Kelly, Kelly, don't leave yet. Along those same lines, Kelly, who was trying to, to get out of here before we recognized her, Kelly Beth Horton is our state lobbyist with Heffley and Associates out of Tallahassee, and she's, Kelly, stand please, if you would. She is a part and parcel of our lobbying team that has helped us bring all these projects to Walton County, and it's just been amazing. So, thank you very much, Kelly.
Kelly Beth, thank you for the very many telephone calls, both directions, and the long hours that went into working with us, helped frame these in an understandable fashion. Thank you.
That's right, and we'll, we'll let you go now, if you need to, if you need to, if you need to dart out, thank you.
She is homegrown.
If you need to dart out, yes.
She's homegrown.
Okay, do we want to call the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, we're going to officially call the October 28 BCC meeting to order. We have a couple of additions and deletions and continuations to announce.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under county administration, both of these items are very time-sensitive, so we're bringing them to, to you for your consideration today. We need to appoint a commissioner to serve as a, another alternate to the canvassing board. Just recently, there was some changes that required two alternates as opposed to just one, and I think that was a result of the anticipation of the closeness of perhaps some of the races coming up, that there's, could be a lot of that going on, so if
I, I know. Go ahead. So, is, is anybody want to be an alternate?
Am I the only one?
You're the only, I'm already an alternate.
Gee, I would love the job.
You take it yourself.
Okay, I appoint Sarah, I appoint Commissioner Commander to be the second alternate.
Don't miss a minute.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Okay, we, we need a, yeah, I can't make the motions.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay, congratulations, Sarah, you are the new second or third alternate.
And the other is from SAD Development, that we're working on the, the development, on the distribution facility property in Mossy Head. We have a request from them to consider some variances to our land use regulations, and we'll present that to you in the body of the meeting. And then under the county attorney's request to approve the modified contract for sale and purchase of real property from Forest View LLC, that is the South Walton Sports Park property. There are some time constraints as well to get to closing, so we need to have your action on this today.
Motion to approve the, the additions and deletions?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we want to announce that several items in the public hearings are going to be continued, just have asked to be continued, just so that if you're here for those, you won't, you won't be waiting for them. Under, let's see, under public hearings, under public hearings, which is at 4:40 on your agenda, item number one, consider an ordinance, known as the Outdoor Events Ordinance, we would like a motion to continue that meeting until November 12.
Okay, do we need to approve the agenda first, or?
If you want to go ahead and continue the items, you can, then approve the agenda with the continued
Okay, motion to continue the Outdoor Events Ordinance until November the 12?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And also, number five, the resolution regarding proportionate fair share funding for the East Quarter multi-use pathways, to continue it to November 12.
Motion to move the resolution, amend the county transportation fund budget to recognize proportionate fair share funding to November the 12.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll go back to the, the public
Previous agenda.
Approval of, approval of the agenda with the additions and deletions. Didn't you already do that?
We did that.
We already did that, yeah, okay. But we have to approve
No, we approved the agenda with the addition. We approved the additions and deletions.
Okay, we need to approve the agenda with the additions and deletions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, public comments. We have a public comment session limited to three minutes, and I would ask you that if your item is on the agenda, that you wait until the agenda item comes up. These are public comments on issues other than the public, other than the agenda. Yes, Ms. Harris?
First, I want to thank Kenneth Bridgen for all the work he did in the past few years. It's been nice getting to know you, and I appreciate it. Second person I'd like to thank is Scott Brandon, for proving that I really am a Florida resident. I know the district attorney went to a lot of trouble with Scott and Mike Atkinson and whoever else, and I'd like to thank their little group for proving that I am a Florida resident, and I can just hold my head up when I go to vote. That's the second thing. The third thing is, I did a public records request today, I'm sure Larry got it, and, and Mark, but if you didn't, my records request is, if anyone has applied to buy a desk for $10,000 or more, I would like a copy of the requisition for that desk. If it was not done in writing, it was done verbally, I would like to know who in the world is a commissioner. If any of y'all have a $12,000 desk, please let me know tonight, but if, if that is what's going on here, then we have a major problem, so we need to know. It was discussed at the last meeting, and y'all were going to set a limit for how much new commissioners and old commissioners should spend, so I, this is, you can consider this my formal public record request, for any furniture bought and paid for, for any commissioner's office, to be refurnished or to be furnished as a new office, I would like to have that, hopefully by this week.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll hear from Larry Jones, county administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, we have before you a request to approve a resolution proclaiming October 27th through 31st of 2014 as Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week, and recognize the Emerald Coast Young Marines. Sergeant Clough is here today representing the Emerald Coast Young Marines, and we will ask him to come forward and make a short presentation.
Good evening, I'm your Sergeant Clough of the Emerald Coast Young Marines. I'm going to read to you the story of Kiki Camarena. Kiki Camarena never asked to be a hero. On Thursday, February 7th, 1985, at about 2:00 PM, Kiki locked his badge and service revolver in his desk drawer and left to meet his wife for lunch. According to the DEA's reconstruction of events, Kiki crossed the street to his pickup truck, turned off the truck's burglar alarm, and unlocked his door. Before he could get into the cab and pick up the two-way radio to alert his partners, he was grabbed by five men. He was shoved into a waiting van and sped away. This is the last time anyone but his kidnappers would see him alive. One month later, Kiki Camarena's body and that of his informant were discovered in a shallow grave. They have been beaten and brutally murdered. Your Kiki Camarena was 37 years old and left behind a wife, three young sons, and a drink. When he was murdered by the drug dealers in Mexico, they ended his life but not his dream. As long as we continue to remember him and wear red ribbons and fight illegal drug use, his dream is still alive. And with this, I'd like to ask for you guys to support the proclamation.
Okay. Do we have a motion? We have a resolution 2014-103, recognizing, proclaiming October 27th through the 31st as Red Ribbon Week, and recognizes the Emerald Coast Young Marines' commitment to living a drug-free life and participation in Red Ribbon Week.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, and
Thank you very much.
I would like to present you with a copy of the resolution, signed resolution.
Thank you, commissioners, for supporting that worthy cause. Next item is regarding the Emergency Operations Center renovations. This has been a daunting task to get to where we are today, and you're talking fighting bureaucrats and bureaucracy. I want to try to renovate a building that's owned by the state. It gets real interesting. We're asking you to approve an award to Empire Builders for $313,962. They were the second low bidder in this process. The low bidder was found to be non-responsible in their financials and some of the other conditions, so we're, staff recommends us awarding to Empire Builders for $313,962.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Jones, that will be at the public hearing in November to actually move those funds out of reserves?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Pull them up.
Next item, Madam Chair, is a request to approve the RFQ that's been attached to your board packet and advertised for the Professional Consulting Services to master plan the South Walton Sports Complex. We've, believe we've drafted a, a request for qualifications that will meet the needs of that facility, and we certainly ask that you approve and allow us to put it on the street and continue moving this process.
So moved.
Second, I have a question. Were we able to involve the community in assessing what the needs that we're going to be looking at?
There will be public hearings associated with their, their review and recommendation schedule.
So, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And that, yes, there will be, the consultant will conduct the public meetings and take input from the shareholders.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is regarding the Grayton Beach Neighborhood Plan, and to be specifically clear, we're not asking you to take any action regarding the plan itself, the merits of the plan, or the contents of it. By virtue of the fact that we are property owners within, the county are property owners within the boundaries, and the, what you're seeing on the screen are those properties, I believe there are a total of seven of them. The, the nature of the process that establishes a neighborhood plan allows property owners within the, the boundaries of that plan to participate by voting, whether they want the plan to proceed, or they wish the plan not to proceed. It takes 66% of the eligible voting property owners to move the initiative forward, that's 66% of those who participate. So, the request before you is, one, do you wish to participate in the voting of, of whether this process moves to the next step? And staff recommends that we don't participate, and then, and I'll explain it a little further because we think there's a, a conflict of interest, number one, if you vote for or against, and then you have to vote to approve the, the plan. The second of all, we believe that public property should be excluded from any and all neighborhood plans, so it's staff's recommendation that you vote to not participate in this process, and that you direct staff to initiate the process, to take the appropriate steps to exclude any public properties from any neighborhood plans, including this one, and going forward. Now, that may be two motions.
No, one.
Okay.
All right, I, I just made that motion.
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
And if, if it, if it does indeed receive the required 66% vote, it will come back through a legislative process before the planning commission, and then back to the Board of County Commissioners. Next item is the AVCON parking needs assessment. Tonya is here, and she may have a few words to say. Tonight, we're simply asking that you accept the, the report, not making any decision on the contents of it, and we will further request that you direct staff to analyze and assess each of the individual locations where they've identified additional parking, to bring back to you within a 45-day period or so, what that assessment looks like, whether it's feasible, whether it's practical, are there safety issues, and look further and more in depth into each of those, and, and how much it's going to cost. Recognizing that there may be some that you would like to move sooner than later, if there are particular locations that have been identified that you'd like the, the staff to look at and assess first, we'd be glad to do that and bring you those reports back as quickly as we can, but we'll let Tonya
And she's coming up. Should we have some discussion, if we're going to ask staff to do that, should we have some discussion about those that we all know, you know, that we're, we don't want to be even looked at? Should we eliminate those from the beginning, or just bring back a recommendation on all of them?
You certainly can, but why don't we move forward and let, and this, with the total process, and then, unless, if you've got those that you have concerns about, we'll pay particular attention to them.
Okay.
But certainly, whatever the board chooses, we, we'll be glad to do.
Just briefly, wanted to just, just give you the executive summary of it, which, of the study, which we were selected in October of 2013 to complete the evaluation of your current parking systems. The study included compiling an inventory of the current parking facilities, identify parking deficiencies, and proposing improvements that we can, to enhance the parking capacity within the existing areas within the study area, and then also to review the land owned by Walton County And then also to review the land owned by Walton County to identify potential parking expansion areas, and then to evaluate your current policies as well as provide some generalized parking alternatives, looking into the future. So we identified approximately 972 existing parking spaces and recommended for your consideration 453 spaces throughout the study limits. We also provided recommendations in your report for the parking ordinance as well as some pay-to-park areas where it may make sense to add some pay-to-park options, pay, park-and-ride, and possibly park-and-bike, and ways that you can implement those as well, as well as some just recommendations on enforcement. But in summary, the study provides recommendations on various parking alternatives, ordinance recommendations, and other parking alternatives for board's consideration. Each ordinance, parking lot improvement, and ordinance revision will require staff's coordination and the board's consideration prior to implementing the study. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions? One of the, yeah, yes, Mr. Booth, do you want to say something? Yes.
Very common.
Yes, 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 go ahead.
While these papers wait, I just, before any action's taken on any of them, we will bring it back to the board for your consideration.
Yeah. And some of these are joint TDC, county areas, and so they need to go through all that review process to see, you know, what needs to be done. But go ahead, sorry.
Thank you. Charles Booth, 320 Beachfront Trail. I wanted to ask tonight that you either reject the portions of the AVCON study that have to do with the Beachfront Trail area or the Beachfront Trail public access, or that you delete from the directions to Walton County staff any parts of the project that have to do with that area. AVCON has recommended 254 parking spaces be added in the first five years after the implementation begins of this. 25 of those, 10% of the parking spaces in the entire South Walton area are on the Beachfront Trail. That's a narrow, crooked street. It's hardly wide enough for two vehicles to pass. There are no sidewalks, there are no bike paths, there's no right-of-way parking because there's no right-of-way. There's an easement for a roadway that was created so that certain property owners would not be landlocked, but there is no right-of-way. And it's a, there's no turnaround on the street. We were told that staff, AVCON staff, Walton County staff, and some of the commissioners viewed the site. If you viewed the site, you had to turn around in a private driveway. There's no other place to turn around. Pushing more traffic there by further development is just a mistake. AVCON's recommended only one of the 40-plus neighborhood beach accesses in Walton County be re-designated as a regional beach access. That's the one on Beachfront Trail. The award, contract award to AVCON from the county did not include anything about a recommendation about changing classification from neighborhood beach access to regional beach access. There are no standards established for AVCON to make that recommendation, and AVCON didn't disclose what standards they used to make that recommendation. In other words, AVCON, by changing the classification to regional beach access, created a need for more parking and then recommended that more parking be provided. That's not consistent with what they were asked to do. On July 31, the TDC made a presentation in their Neighborhood Beach Access Initiative in which they explained that they wanted to retain the character of this Beachfront Trail Neighborhood Beach Access as a neighborhood beach access and not become a regional beach access. The neighbors in the area agreed, that's what is appropriate. Safety was not mentioned in anywhere in the award or in the AVCON study. Traffic was specifically excluded. It's irresponsible to.
And exclude traffic. They didn't. Yeah.
Madam Chair, I think that staff will take those into consideration, and also when Mr. Bagby's time comes up here, I know that we've directed him also to look at some other off-site parking areas of significant size that would help to alleviate traffic issues or slicker than that, but I think it'd be tough for staff, we'll do this one, not that one. Let staff come back, let them work with you, and talk about the issues that are involved so that when they come back and make recommendations of the board, they'll have your input as well.
Thank you, sir. May I leave my comments, written comments, then for the board and for staff? Our point is only that the street, the neighborhood is not sufficient to accommodate.
Are there any comments from the board or questions? Or, I do think that Cliff Nowher has a DEP, we have DEP funding for the bridge at Western Lake, and as part of that project, we wanted to include the parking on 30A and Grayton Beach. So if we could give that as a top priority to the people that are going to be prioritizing and costing these out so that we can do the project all at once. They're going to put a sidewalk in, they're going to put a bridge in, and parking would go along with that.
You want that part of the motion?
So that was, yeah, as a priority.
Just let us know.
Yeah, to direct staff. And as far as Beachfront Trail goes, I think one of the things that the AVCON people looked at was where are people parking already? And if they're parking in certain areas already, tell us that and tell us if it would make sense to formalize some spaces, maybe not a regional access, but maybe a handful of spaces or two or three spaces so that people that are already, that it's already a parking place. And that trail does have 66 feet of right-of-way in various sun-drenched places. So I think that it merits looking at, it may not merit what is being proposed, but I think it merits being looked at as a whole.
That's why I'd like to see staff.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to just accept the study and direct staff to come back to us with prioritizing and recommendations?
Yeah.
That's my motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so staff will come back with us, to us, with some prioritizations. TDC will look at, TDC will look at that, and you'll look at the right-of-way widths, the sand dunes, everything involved so that we have that information. Okay, go ahead.
And we would anticipate TDC and their staff and our engineering staff to work together to come up with the best conclusion.
About 90 days or so.
We're thinking 45. We may take 60, but it's, they said 30. I said, let's give it 45, just to be sure, so it'll probably be 60.
Let's shoot for 45.
Next item is regarding requests that we carried forward from the last board meeting regarding a office space and sheriff substation at Mosshead Industrial Park. While we'd had discussions with the sheriff about his participation, we hadn't nailed down a number, but have since been able to communicate with the sheriff, and he's committed $25,000 of the estimated total cost of $100,000 for the construction of the project. Those things are unique to the sheriff's office and that he needs for that component he'll fund himself. So it's our request that we move forward with this facility and utilizing now $75,000 from the land purchase account from land sales in Mosshead Industrial Park.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next item is a request to approve a Work Squad Agreement, number 814, from the Florida Department of Corrections. This is a work crew that works in our parks and wrecks. It's just a continuation of the process that we've had for some time to keep them working on our behalf.
Did you skip over SADS or you come back to them?
I don't know.
Skipped over G and H.
Gee, we've already appointed. Sad development request. Various. Let me look at this.
All right, let's go to this one. Thank you. As part of the sad development in Mosshead and the distribution facility that we're looking at, they have certain needs that are outside of our covenants restrictions or land use restrictions that are very minor issues. We reviewed those. We don't see any of them that make any negative impact to the overall intent of those, so there's a list there before you, and we would ask that you approve that list in whole so we can communicate back to them that those issues have been taken care of.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right.
Then the work squad.
All right. Back to the work squad. This is just one of our park and wreck work squads from the Florida Department of Corrections.
And we love them. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Did we vote on the building for Mosshead? The sheriff substation, can you just?
Yes.
Okay.
You are on Public Works.
Second option.
Thermo striping.
Before you, it's a request through Public Works to exercise a second option to renew agreement for thermoplastic striping, the Rosegate North Florida. Per the agreement, there were a slight, was a slight increase in their rates and charges, but the total amount we spent on this contract last year was about $8,000, so it's not a huge contract, but we do find them to be much more reasonably priced than their competitors. So we would recommend your approval.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Did you vote? Yes.
He grunted, is that the same thing? Yeah.
Okay, all in favor. Grunt.
Next item is, Madam Chair, is regarding a draft traffic calming policy. We present this to you for your review. We're not looking for any action today, but if you would return your comments back to Public Works, we will certainly get them into a more complete document for your consideration at a later date.
Okay, there's no motions needed on that, correct?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Last item is a request to approve a sales tax revenue note resolution and execution of loan documents for the property acquisition and construction process of the South Walton Sports Complex. This is the next step in procuring the $10 million funds and to move forward so we can close that property in a timely manner.
Commissioners, can I make one suggestion? This is going to move relatively quickly from now till closing. Just in case, if you would make a motion to approve the resolution, authorize the chair or the vice chair to execute any documents necessary. That way, if something happens and we need it signed quickly, we'll have a vice chair available.
So moved. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This time, we're going to take a, what, about a 15-minute break? And I'm sorry, Mr. Bagby, but we have to do some work in the back. We'll reconvene at.
We're in the back.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and, we're going to go ahead and reconvene the meeting. If everyone will take their seat, turn their phones on, off, or silent, and we're on the agenda. We are on Jim Bagby, TDC directors. Hot slot stuff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, the first item we have on the agenda is to request to approve the current marketing plan. You approved the budget. We normally, I guess, don't lay this out for you because this is actually something that we don't want to make a public record. We will change the format next year before we give this to you because this shows everything that we are advertising in, every publication, when we're advertising. So if we had a competing destination that wanted to steal some of our folks, it'd be good for them to know in August we're going to be in Southern Living and what our emphasis is going to be, but we ask that you approve that marketing plan.
Can we shred this?
You can.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The second item we have on the agenda is to request to approve changes to capital purchase plan to transfer funds not to exceed $15,000 from the contingency light item to accommodate conference room updates. What we're going to do is basically put granite, have the ability to do Granicus live streaming in the TDC conference room so that we can move, have the option of having the TDC meetings there, and also our committee meetings, which we do already host there, and as a backup for the BCC should this facility not be available on the south end.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The third item we have, Madam Chair and Commissioners, is a request approval to advertise for an RFQ for the public space design charrette. We've discussed this before. The TDC recommended approval when they met at the first of the month, and we'd ask that you approve.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item we have is to request approved changes for the fiscal year 2016 sponsorship grants and guidelines. What we're trying to do is to make the criteria more objective as opposed to subjective so that people know exactly or about how much they would be eligible for when they made their application.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries.
And then the final detailed item we have is a request that you approve the North Walton Events sponsorship grants totaling $20,000. We did have one event drop out, Lori's event, Outdoor Walton, Walton Outdoors, had been approved or recommended approval for $2,000, and they decided that they couldn't use that for marketing this year, but we do have the Marvel of Flight and Chautauqua both were recommended by the North Walton Events Committee for $10,000 each for marketing.
Great, okay. We need a motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then we have several updates. I just want to run through these fairly quickly. We had our annual meeting last week. Jeannie Daly was the recipient of the Van Ness Butler Jr. Award, our hospitality award, very well deserved, and Juan Francisco Adaro was designated as our Artist of the Year. Today, we have Emerald in town filming season three, which you approved the funding for, for the Cooking Channel and Food Network, and we expect those to air, those episodes to air, probably starting in the middle of January. And of course, we will have ads and prominent placement on those channels. We, last week, we also had, Santa Rosa Beach was designated or selected by Travel and Leisure as the number five, number five on a list of America's favorite towns, Aspen being number one. So we're a pretty good company up there. If we had all the little beach communities together in one destination, we'd probably easily be number one, but Santa Rosa Beach by itself came in at number five. We also had, The Pearl was selected as the number one hotel, and Watercolor Inn was selected as the number one resort by Condi Nast readers.
We're just going to quiet the people down out in the hall?
They're still talking about their parking in Beachfront. That's okay.
Okay, okay.
And speaking of parking, we continue to look at parking off-site locations. As Commissioner Enfeld alluded to, we've identified another parcel. There may be some issues, but we're done, I think, with trying to find beachfront parcels. The one that we're looking at now would be the third one, and we have found several off-site or north of 30A parcels. We may be bringing some of those to you to ask you to go through the real property purchasing process. And then we have four positions that open up at the end of this year. On the TDC, we will be putting out a public notice and an advertisement asking people to, if they want to apply, to apply by the end of November. Two of those are bad tax collectors, and one is a tourism-related position, and so we'll put the specifics out on that and bring those back for approval at the December meeting for you to approve. And subject to your questions, that's. And subject to your questions, that's all we have for updates.
Anybody have any questions? No. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, Mark Davis.
Thank you, Commissioners. The first item is a request for you to grant permission to the Design Review Board to hold at least a couple of public workshops to consider making recommendations to amend Chapter 13 of the Land Development Code, specifically those portions pertaining to color building materials and landscaping materials within the scenic quarter. We are rece, and Lee Moore, Tim Norris, and David Bailey from the Design Review Board are here tonight if they want to say anything, but we receive a number of the same kinds of requests for variances, and they're minor things like black and white, for instance, to be considered a color that would be approved, but that's not in the Muncil chart that they are, they are bound by. There's a particular palm tree, for some reason, that keeps coming up that landscapers want to use that's native to the area, I believe, and it's not in the, it's not in the criteria. So we'd like to hold a couple of workshops and muscle those things out and then bring back a proposed recommendation.
Correct, correct. Tim Norris. The idea of the workshop is that we've got probably three different areas, and one is the colors that people are submitting, and there's some, some fine lines between what we have, and it's a very minimal number of colors that we have in the book now, in the Muncil book. And also, the building materials somewhat have changed over the years, and so now it's time to kind of review some of those and see if we can add some of those into the, into the mix. And also, the plants. We're seeing plants that are very similar to the plants that we have locally that are indigenous to the area, but they're different types, but they are in the same category, I guess you could say. So we're asking for an opportunity to have a workshop, workshops, to see what comes up in recommendations and bring them back to the board.
And we just need a motion to give them the opportunity to have at least, I would say at least two workshops, and then if we need more, we'll come back.
And when you're advertising, are you going to specifically advertise the things that you're going to look at? Because I can envision some people seeing Chapter 13 and wanting to talk about signs.
Yeah, me too.
Just those items, Commissioner.
Just make sure we advertise those.
Yeah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is a request to approve a traffic signal maintenance and compensation agreement with the State of Florida Department of Transportation. Just a little bit of quick background. This is actually a temporary agreement. We have an agreement in place. It's, I think, has another eight months left on it, and we received out of the blue a new replacement agreement, not this one, that changed dramatically, frankly, our responsibilities and costs associated with maintaining traffic signals. The Florida Association of County Attorneys, I mean, every county, every city got this agreement, and there was no discussion, no talk. So we sort of held up our hands and started yelling, "Hold on a second, let's, let's talk about it." But this is simply a temporary bridge agreement between now and then so we can finally finish negotiating out the permanent agreement. So I would ask you to approve it. So we'll have one in place in case we don't have a final agreement. This does not significantly change our current responsibilities.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And lastly, Commissioners, now that we have borrowed the money, we need to buy the land, and as you know, you approved a contract last meeting. However, when we submitted the contract to the attorneys for the sellers, they had one significant change they would ask us to make, and it's been provided to you. It's in paragraph one that we're going to not only purchase the land, but we are recognizing that there is a non-exclusive easement. It's been recorded already in O.R. Book 25, 2958 at page 183 over a portion of the property. This is the access road. It's a fairly technical legal reason. The easement was actually created when both parcels were owned by the same person. Well, you can't create an easement on property that's, somebody has to own one piece, somebody has to own another. In other words, you have to have a burdened piece and a non-burdened piece. It was actually created before the properties were split, so this just recognizes that it exists and we would be subject to, it touches our land, so we would be subject to it, and it's just the road that goes into the property.
Okay, so it's, so it's the north-south road that comes off of 98, goes up through the property and would be the access to the park?
That's correct, yes. 66-foot wide, yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, now, we're going to go on to the public hearings. Do we need a motion? I think we need a motion to open the public hearings.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the first one has been continued until November the 12th. Do we need anything?
No, ma'am. You've already voted to do that. Yes, ma'am.
The second one is, "Consider an ordinance recognizing formalizing inlet beach water system, Inc.'s exclusive franchise to operate and maintain a public water supply and sewage collection and disposal system in Walton County."
Commissioners, this is the public hearing for adoption for the inlet beach water system, Inc.'s franchise ordinance. We had made changes prior to the last meeting. I think you essentially, I've had no objections or changes since the last meeting, and we would simply ask you to ask for public comments and then move to approve or deny the ordinance.
Okay, are there any public comments? Okay, there being none?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Do we need to close each one of these public hearings, or are you going to let them go with one?
We can do it all in one public hearing because none of them have to be closed or reopened, so we're good.
Okay, okay. Number three is the, let's see, Melissa Thomason, OMB Finance, is the transfer of, let's see, no, amending the budget to bring forward 250,000 from the Tourist Development Council reserves to promote and recruit additional airfare for Walton County. And-
I think she's still-
Melissa's still back there, closing on the, okay. So if there, are there any question, are there any public comments on that? There she is. There she is. Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments or anything that we need to discuss on this? Anybody have any questions, Melissa? Okay.
Motion to approve.
We need a motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, number four. Let's see, Melissa, that's you again. We're amending the budget to bring forward $321,000 in law enforcement automation fund reserves for the replacement of their IT hardware for the sheriff's office. Okay, does anybody have any questions on that of Melissa? Does anybody have any public comments? Okay, there being none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and number five, I believe, that one is the one that's been continued until November 12th. So I'll need a motion to close the public hearings.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Okay, next is Vice Chairman Cindy Meadows. That would be me. I did have a, during the storm events, we had people calling us and asking us to come out and pump and pump water out of their subdivisions and such, and we did so. One particular subdivision, Gulf Pines subdivision, which is down in Miramar, it is county roads. They called us on a Friday. Unfortunately, no one was there to receive the call. They, they just left a message. So on Monday morning, we got the message and we immediately went out there and assisted them. But over the weekend, they hired, they leased some pumps and pumped water off of county right-of-way and, of course, you know, the houses that were subject to flooding. There were some houses that flooded and there were some cars that were ruined. But they have asked, requested reimbursement of the funds. I think it's $16,000. It's in your book. Request reimbursement for those funds that they expended leasing the pumps.
Did they call Public Works?
Yes. Well, they called, well, they called our office and left a message. And they, and they, and it didn't get, it didn't get through, and so Public Works did not make it out there.
So you've got a private organization that made an expenditure-
Yeah, it's, it's a, some homeowners made an expenditure, yeah, because the county could not-
Because, because they couldn't get you?
Well, one of the things was that the county, the county guys said they couldn't have gotten there anyway because they were, they didn't have enough pumps, and they were pumping four or five other locations.
They don't prioritize? So in other words, if they had to prioritize, they could have prioritized?
Well, I think it's-
I mean, we never had the, we never had the opportunity to respond?
Well, I think it's one of those, I think it's one of those things where we had, we had about six different locations that were underwater, and they immediately went out to about three of them and started pumping. Well, they, they didn't have any more pumps. And then this group called us and left a message, and they went ahead and rented their own pumps.
But didn't we authorize, authorize Public Works to rent as many as we needed?
Under their auspices, yes. And I believe we had a contract for that. So I, I'm reluctant to say, I mean, something happened in District Three, and if they called my office on a Saturday and left a message, I mean, I don't, I don't think, I mean, Public Works is the point of contact for this, including the emergency authorizations that the board previously gave them.
But I'm not sure they knew that.
Okay, but that doesn't give them the right to go out and incur an expenditure and then send the bill to the county?
Well, I think it was under the emergency flooding situation where-
Still doesn't give them the right to incur a cost for the county without our approval.
I, I guess I'll play devil's advocate. Couldn't they have called the Sheriff's Department, "Hey, I need to get up with somebody in Public Works. You know, we've got a definite problem here." Kind of be resourceful and, okay, because they couldn't get you and understand that. You know, call Larry Jones's office or call the Sheriff's Office and say, "Hey, we need, we need help," you know, rather than just making one phone call and then stomping. That was, I guess that's my concern, you know, say, "Hey, if I needed it bad enough, I'd, I'd move, you know, heaven and earth to try to get help."
Do we have any public, public comment on that?
Suzanne, you want to come up?
I think, is, is Mr. Martin here from Gulf Pines? Okay.
I'd love for y'all to pay our pumping bill because it was a whole lot more than that, but I'm going to tell you, we lost 11 cars, and we're not asking for a dime from the county. We never have. Four years ago, Gulf Pines floods all the time because they have asked me for my help to help their subdivision. Bobby Bowick, who was president of Gulf Pines, who's been a friend of mine for 100 years, they have, I have gotten Jim Martinella out of Tallahassee up here personally to meet with them on this. I also had, she's still in the back, Andy Jocelyn from the DEP. I also got him to come and meet with Bobby and all them. The pump, they have pumped for years. They, they even got the name and all from me for the pumps before. Their problem at Gulf Pines is not to do with county. It is to do with they had a pipe that used to go from the pond out, but that pipe has been blocked, like a lot of the outfalls in the county have been blocked. It's been blocked by construction or the beet tree nourishment. They're not sure which. But they know where to buy pumps. They know to start pumping way before the storm ever comes. When Edgewater knows the storm's coming, we have the pumps brought in three days before. They have all of the information. But if you start paying for one person to pump, then you better be paying for Edgewater reimbursing us for all the times we've had to pump from Edgewater's lower parking garage. I have $4 million worth of damage to our building. And if anybody, I called, and we didn't get pumps on the very next day, but we took them when we could get them, and we were thankful for Public Works because they did everything they could to help everybody.
Well, and I guess my question is, on private lands, yeah, I can understand that. This is, these are public right-of-ways, and we did, we, we pumped on just about, if anybody called and they were underwater, Brown Street, Private Street, we pumped it.
Did you pay them back every time they pumped for the past five years?
No, because they've never requested it.
Well-
Nobody's ever, nobody's ever requested it because we went out there and took county pumps and pumped off of private lands for, so that we could relieve the, now, these guys went out and got their own for public lands, and they're, and that's what they're asking. They're asking us to reimburse them because we did not pump in their neighborhood. So, so what is the board's decision on this?
Make a motion to deny.
Okay, is there a second?
I have a second motion.
Okay, there's a motion and-
I think we set a, there's a dangerous precedent. I really do.
Okay, okay. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll say nay. And we'll move to the next. Motion carries to deny the repayment. Okay, Commissioner Commander?
Yes, ma'am. Melinda, would you come up, please? And I don't know whether she's spoken to y'all about this, but she can give you a short, three-minute version on what we're trying to accomplish here.
Hi, Melinda Gates, Walton County Environmental Department. We, the first item under Commissioner Commander's name is, we are requesting a letter of support for a project for Restore Act. Restore Act has five different pots. This particular pot that we're requesting a letter of support for is Pot Number Two. It's referred to as the Council Pot. And the Council Pot will, it evaluates projects from all five states. So the project that we would like for the State of Florida to take to the Council for consideration is a massive estering restoration or water quality type project. It is written generically to allow for each watershed to develop a specific project or projects that would fit into a $2 million budget.
It's imperative, counties, if we go individually, we're going to get nothing. The Council, which is, she says, the five states and the director of all kinds of federal government agencies, will rank these, and we are competing with Louisiana, and we know, you know, what happened there. If we combine together as a region and submit projects and as a state, we feel like we have a far better chance of getting, getting money to help with, start with some of our problems. So we need a letter of support that we can send to the governor. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The second item, which is under Commissioner Commander's name, is regarding our Local Restore Act. We have been approached by several members of the public that have concerns that because of the amount of money that is going to be given to Walton County for Local Restore Act, that smaller projects might not be considered. So what we are asking for is amendment to our current comprehensive plan that was established for the Local Restore Act to include the language on here that reads, "In effort to encourage all scopes of project, Walton County may designate up to 5% of the total restore funds received by direct component Pot Number One, Transocean Settlement, to mini-grants. Mini-grant projects are those projects that cost $50,000 to $100,000, have a two-year completion timeframe, and meet all the Restore Act criteria."
This gives, you know, very simple, gives little projects a chance to compete. And we say transocean right now because that's the only money we see and really don't see anymore in the near future. So this gives us, you know, everybody can get something, you know?
Okay, any questions, any comments? Okay. There's motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Enfeld, do you have anything?
Go ahead.
Okay. Commissioner Pridgen?
Yes, the School Board has sent a letter to the county. Want to note, they would like to accept, accept the Gaskin Lodge that had closed last year. It used to be the voting precinct. People in the community used it for a community center and other activities, and I would like for the county to accept that to be used for a community center and other functions. Fire Department has used it in the past for classes and other things they, they teach Fire Department has used it in the past for classes and other things they, they, uh, teach and, uh-
Do you know what kind of shape it's in? How much is it going to-
It's a block, it's a block building. We put a new top on it a year ago. Uh, it's been painted inside and outside. I mean, it's in good shape.
Is that the building next to where your, your office is?
Yeah.
Does it have to go through the property acquisition procedures?
Yes, sir, it would. I, I think the school district, and I'm speaking as a county attorney, the school district actually sent, they, they've got it back through a deed process and, uh, they, the school district has no use for it. So, they, they were going to surplus it if they wanted to offer it to the county as a possible, uh, piece of property the county might need.
Could we use it like for a voting site or something?
That's what it was, voting site.
Yes, we would have to go through the acquisition process since it's going to be a-
Is it still used to vote? No, they had to move it this time because it went back to, the, the school board had to retain the property back. So, it took some time.
But if we got it back, it possibly could be used as a voting precinct?
Yeah, right.
We need a motion just to look into it, start process?
If you would, motion to start the acquisition process.
Okay, I'll make a motion to look in, yeah, to start the process and see where we are. And if, you know, in the, in the process, I'd like to know if it needs renovations, if it needs work, how much is it going to cost to, to bring it up to code, for example?
I think Brad's already looked at it.
I think, uh, off the top of my head, but we'll get you better numbers, only $7,500. I think it was not a lot. A couple of windows and a couple heaters.
What are the operational costs per year?
Don't have that yet. Sure.
You have, that's your motion.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, and then I noticed Commissioner Chapman had on here. Does anybody want to take that?
I'd be glad to cover that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Over the last year or so, the U.S. Department of Environmental Protection Agency and the Corps of Engineers have been working on some plans that would, um, take jurisdiction in many locations where they don't have jurisdiction now, some of them being as small as drainage areas, uh, which would be a very cumbersome process for county staff and, um, when we go to build roads or even down to cleaning or maintaining ditches. Uh, so, we're, we've asked our staff to look at and provide comments to send back to them and, uh, this time since this, I think by the end of the month, we have to, uh, get them back. So, we would ask permission to allow the chair to sign the letter associated with those comments to forward to the appropriate parties, uh, sharing our comments and thoughts with their ideas.
Absolutely. And that only affects us and the roads we try to build. So, it affects mosquito control. Um, gosh, I mean, we'd have to ask, we'd have to ask the state practically every time we mowed.
I think they also want to restrict bathtub water as well.
Well, I only take a bath once a week, so it's not-
I think they want everything.
They're going to move over here.
I didn't say how often I took a shower.
Okay, we need a motion to, uh, go ahead and, uh, get this done.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion, uh, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Can I have an add-on?
Okay, uh-oh, Larry Jones has an add-on.
Um, just, this just came to light today, but apparently at last night's Dufusianak Springs City Council meeting, uh, there were some comments regarding, um, our responsibilities to Gene Hurley Park and Harvest and Field where, which are county facilities. But in the past, the county has entered into interlocal agreements with them to provide maintenance for those facilities. Um, I wasn't at the meeting, but the reports I've heard from the meeting was that, um, there were some comments stated that were not in, uh, favor of the county and what hadn't perhaps had not been done on those parks and, um, perhaps some things that might have been less than accurate. Uh, so, in taking a look at that today, uh, we certainly have the ability to opt out of both of those interlocal agreements and let the city take care of their own facilities if that's, works better for them, um, by giving them a 60-day written notice. So, I just want to bring that to your attention. If that's something the board is interested in, staff will, uh, prepare that for your consideration at the next board meeting.
I'd like to follow up with you on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Not only, they said, the council said that they would rather force the county to live up there, to their agreement, and also that there are several county roads inside the city that have issues. Um, I have in my hand, uh, a list of 10 agreements that we have with City Dufusianak Springs and, um, actually 11 and 10 of them, um, we perform a service for the city. Um, I will make the motion here today to, to send the letter on the Gene Hurley Park and, and the Harvest and Field Park, saying, given them 60 days, they can take over, um, the maintenance of those parks. Um, I think recently they spent $16,000 on a one-day event. Well, then maybe they can use that $16,000 more wisely, in my opinion. And I would also like at our next meeting to discuss whether or not we let them take over the maintenance of their roads.
I'll second that. I'd like to add a comment, too. Uh, my district has been approached from the standpoint, uh, in particular on Hague Hill Road, that, uh, there are three customers up there that would like the water service from the city. But they've told them that they'll cut up the roads to provide the water service, but they want the county to come in and then re-repay the roads there. And my position would be that if you break it, you fix it. So, uh, I, I don't know what's afoot of all of a sudden trying to shift the cost to the county, but, uh, I'm, I'm going to second Commissioner Commander's motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Uh, motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioners, since it was an agenda, what I would suggest is a motion be direct staff to bring a, a, a proposal back to you. That way, we can agenda the proposal back.
We can't send the letter out tomorrow?
Uh, no, ma'am. I will be a little uncomfortable doing that.
Be uncomfortable.
We, we will certainly send them a letter that is going to be on the agenda.
Yes, that's what I was going to suggest. Thank you.
Okay, okay, that sounds good. Okay. Uh, anything else? Okay, uh, we have, uh, uh, believe it or not, we are only five minutes off the agenda because public, additional public comments was at 5:25. And if you hadn't added that one on, we would-
It's my fault. I, I think, full responsibility for it.
We would have been on target for the first time in, uh, I think since 2004.
But, but if Chapman had did his, it would have been a lot longer.
Yeah.
I yielded myself some of his time.
That's true. So, at 5:30, we will take additional public comments. Uh, anybody have any additional public comments that they wish to make at this time? Okay, I don't see any, so we're going to move on to the legis, Planning and Development Services, the legislative items. We need a motion to open the public hearing for legislative items. All in favor, say aye.
Well, don't everybody leave at once.
Aye. All is in favor, say aye.
See how loud we are?
Aye. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I think you just voted on the rest of the agenda.
Okay, motion carries. Yeah, yeah, motion carries. Okay, Wayne, you're up.
Thank you, Commissioners. The first item on the agenda, we have, we have three legislative items. Two of those are script errors. Uh, the first one is agricultural use ordinance. Um, in that one, we're asking for, to readopt this. We had a slight, uh, alteration of the ad that may cause a problem for us. So, just to be airtight, we want to go back and have that readopted again. Um, and so, we're asking for approval of, uh, the agricultural use ordinance and readoption of that ordinance.
So moved.
Wait, we gotta, we have to have, um, public comments. Yeah.
And move it right along.
Okay, any public comments on this particular ordinance? Okay, there being none? Sarah, can you get out of your candy box?
I did that once. I'm fine, I'm fine having some Snickers.
Sarah's, uh, okay. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, the next item, uh, is an adoption hearing, uh, for, to amend the Conference of Plan and Land Development Code as it relates to the plat fee ordinance. Um, if you have any questions, I believe Cindy had worked on this as well, but we're asking for adoption of that, that ordinance as well, those two, for the Conference of Plan and Land Development Code.
Okay, are there any public comments on that particular ordinance? Okay, there being none, need a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And Commissioners, the last item on the legislative, uh, items is the limited lodging ordinance, the script error. Uh, we had listed in the ordinance, we listed a K instead of an L. So, we, um, we are asking to, to have that adopted as well, readopt that based on the script error.
Okay, are there any public comments on that? Okay, there being none, need a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. I mean, opposed? None. Motion carries. I'm kidding.
And, uh, Chairman, the last item is, um, the QJ items.
Anyone who anticipates, uh, testifying or speaking before the board regarding this quasi-dedicial item, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do each of you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth?
I do.
Does anyone have any objections to the published notice for tonight, published notice for tonight's quasi-dedicial hearing? There are none. Any Commissioners have any quasi, uh, any ex parte contacts that they would need to disclose?
None.
It's all yours, Mr. Martin.
Uh, the last item on the agenda for tonight is the West Shore Phase Two plat. I'll ask Brian Underwood to give a brief overview of this.
Thank you, Brian Underwood, Planning and Development Services. This is a plat application submitted by Seaside Engineering and Surveying, requesting approval of the final plat for six single-family residential lots on 4.39 acres with feature land use of neighborhood Enfield. Project is located 1/4 mile west of the intersection of Highway 98 and CR 30A on the north side of West Shore Drive, identified by parcel number 25-3S-18-16090-000-0240. Uh, the project site was previously approved for construction of a single lot, uh, single lot, six-lot, single-family residential subdivision by Minor Development Order 13-001-00007 on May 23rd of 2013. There are no known code violations at the subject property. Uh, there have been no public comments received as of October 10th. Uh, the conditions of approval, all comments stated above are to, to be addressed and all necessary permits must be obtained prior to initiation of construction. We have received, uh, financial assurances for the unbuilt sidewalk on the site. Uh, that's in the amount of $7,442.
I have a curiosity question. You said no comments as of October 10th? Has anything happened in the past 18 days?
Um, that was the time at which I had prepared my report, but no, sir, we've not received any comments.
Okay. Anyone, uh, want to speak about this particular plat, this particular proposal from, from the audience? I don't think we had anybody raise their hand. Okay, um, any questions?
Motion to approve.
And, and, and just so we're clear, motion to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the plat.
Next.
Okay, and, uh-
Not on this, not on this.
Okay, okay, okay. Motion to approve in a second?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, we need to, do you need to say something or we need to close the public hearing?
Oh, we can close the public hearing.
Okay, I need a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Public hearings are closed. And Mr. Jones, I think you have something?
Just, just very briefly, um, and I should have mentioned this earlier while most of our staff was still here, but in the last week since we approved the sales agreement with SAD Development for the project in Mosshead, uh, we've had tremendous requests from them for information, material, backup documents. Uh, we've had two meetings with our staff over that period of time and I can't tell you how pleased I have been. And if you knew what they've put into that over the last several days, how pleased you would be at what they've been able to produce and to move forward to, uh, keep this, um, uh, project, um, moving, to show those folks that we are absolutely 100% committed, uh, to winning that deal. And I just wanted, in a public setting, to say thank you to you guys, Mac and Wayne. We're a big part of it. Our engineering, Public Works folks have been a big part of it. But the, the first meeting we had, uh, we gave them till, uh, nine o'clock last Thursday morning. And I can't tell you the volume of material that was produced. And when the folks at, um, SAD Development got it, uh, they, their reply was, we've never seen a more complete, more thorough, and more timely submission of the things we've asked for. Saturday night, we got another email from them wanting another assortment of things. You know, start firing emails Sunday night to all our staff that we need to meet Monday morning at nine. They were all there. And by close of business Monday, they had those documents delivered. So, when you see them or visit with them, tell them thanks for an outstanding job they're putting into making this a reality.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, I suppose we'll adjourn.